Yes, I can.
Welcome to the Board of Finance. Call me each order at seven oh one P M. Do you have alternates? The kind of motion to see Melissa Miller for resolving.
So I'm late.
It's like I'll say. All in favor?
Hi.
Do you for the? Do you have the online book?
Hi.
Alright, three little minutes from June eighteen twenty twenty five.
Jeff, can we dispense with doing that on this meeting? I didn't realize we were gonna be bringing that into a special meeting and not even have a chance to. Sure, I'll move to table the meeting, the newly known as a pretty goal.
Say. All in favor? Hi. Christina, do you want to say I or N A or?
Hi.
Next time. Friend of speech, participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriate as the county is demanding progress. Stand up if you need any help. You guys, you say? Good morning. Thanks for Jim Marshall fifty year old road. It's really just wanna say two brief things that I first. Um, I gotta say, it was evident that you guys were working at different set of numbers last week and all we had available. But I gotta say, I'm quite frankly, for the fact that a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars is positive revenue. Since the movement, six, since the second referendum wasn't discussed at all, didn't come up at all in your discussions about more production needed to be made. And what, how that impacted the whole picture as a board that. That it it just floors you guys, but I don't know when transparency went out the window. In favor of all of it, it sucks. The reality is it's a hundred and fifty seven, a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of reduction since life led to referendum. In our favor, that's a great thing. It should have been applauded, it should have factored into your discussion, but maybe it did. It would have been nice if you guys actually talked about it and promoted it. Um, and in the public aware of where we stood about the change starts since the second referendum. And the only other thing I'll say is I'm really here hoping that you guys. Advocate for the budget for. And stop much of the partisan, pokering nonsense and quite frankly, just posturing. That already seen happen, I'm expecting to see at the selectmen, Mr. Clark. You guys in two days, when they go to actually move this. The referendum. I'm sure there's gonna be more from the chair here as well, but. I mean, all I can say is I wasn't here for this, but I wasn't here in town for it yet, but I. The past four years, a few years in particular, budget discussions make me realize what a similar party had such ground here. Because the absurdity and the hyper partisan crap, quite frankly, coming from the leadership. Particularly on the Republican Party side is it pales them. I I just can't fathom why we are enjoying that stuff. And why, and I'll speak directly to you guys, Bruce, Jeff, Melissa, I know you guys be very reasonable people. I know you guys be working for it's positive, good for all. But if you're not willing to stand up and speak out, even amongst your own party, particularly amongst your own party, when for those. Big mouthpieces for it that aren't really members of the W R I D C, then you're just as complicit. Implicit in everything that happens as a rest. Um, and that goes as well for the Board of Ed members, the Republican Board of Ed members, that's Arthur Christensen, John Mitchell. And Sam Sperry. You guys are elected representatives of the Board of Ed. You should be advocating for families and students in town, but. I I haven't seen any of that, in fact, I've seen the opposite. You guys are not here to be politicians, you're here to support the community they serve. So I really hope to see a lot more positive. We think for a very reasonable budget, quite frankly. Yes, I get that every dollar counts and that some people in this town are hurting. But the reality is you're hurting going through that, none of this is gonna, nothing we do here is gonna do that, you're still gonna be hurting through the three all because we missed that window two months ago. Uh, all this is gonna do is severely and harmfully. Hurt the students in our community and the families that support those students in this community. So I really hope to see you guys out there. And supporting the vote that you took last week to move this budget to referendum. Um, as vocally you can be, because we need to pass this nonsense and get onward with. Passing a responsible budget and then looking forward to the fundamental restructure of what's going on in town with these budgets. But to do so smartly and out of this hazard. Is just the wrong way to do it, so thank you. I, um, couple of things, I I note that those of us in town have very different ideas of what grief is. Secondly, there was a long discussion on the on dollar change to the revenue at the last meeting. Particularly for the C S E. With, uh. One of the ports of the members, members of the Board of Ed. Secondly, I wanna address the question. I'm I'm blanking on her name, that's that's all.
Okay. I mean, I asked on a lot of questions about, did we get credit for the E C S money?
Yes.
We had an extensive conversation.
We did have an extended conversation.
But I, you know, the the point I think is we didn't focus on what, you know, the fullness of what had happened on the other side. I I did that.
Well, we did discuss it. Secondly, the question on the, uh, ballot was brought up last time that we didn't have the data on whether it was too high or too low. You asked me the question of whether we could add even a second question, if you voted yes, is it too high or too low? I have not gotten an answer back from the lawyers on that. If you voted no question, we can add. Uh, I would also like to note that if you voted yes, that. When you look at the scale of way too high or way too low. If you voted yes, it's it's someplace in the acceptable range, whether you think it's too high or too low. Even if you think it's way too high or way too low, it's it's a number that you could vote for. So I think that the game theory on that question would would throw all your data into doubt. If you wanna add the no question, yes or no, the no questions, too high, too low, just let me know so we can add that to the, uh. Call and looking at the dates on the calendar as we last got it, we have, uh. The Board of Selectment meeting, the Call of Town meeting on Thursday the twenty sixth, that's been changed to, uh. Wednesday, the twenty fifth at noon. Which would allow us to go as soon as July first, which is a Tuesday for the town meeting, which is a normal date, I believe, right, Donna? I wanted you in the room to discuss that so that we could go July first and then we'd have the referendum on July eighth, which puts it on a Tuesday. Which is a lot more. Regular. I I understand that Wednesdays are not irregular and have been done in the past. But I think that with a third referendum, we're gonna wanna have it on a Tuesday, which will be normal voting day. And I think that's all I have.
While we're doing that, Kim, do you mind if we maybe make the July tenth date a night? That's something.
Oh, I don't, I, that's, that's, I mean, that one, that one's you.
Yeah, but it says it's.
Yeah, 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 that's.
Next night.
I think that would be a discussion on your board. Also, uh. The, the, one of the questions we had, and I I haven't gotten an answer to it yet, is, uh. Once we set some of this. Free the town meeting, we will have all these dates and times on the calendar. Whether we can send this to the newspapers and have them hold it so that they can start the. Publication right when we need it and we can have them stop it otherwise, there's, uh, issues with. Newspapers used to be able to call them in the morning and print in the evening. Now you call them on Monday and they might be able to get it in by Friday. So you, it's adding extra days, what I'm trying to do is anticipate a, what what we will be advertising and and whether that seems okay to this board, because I.
Let us know if that means.
If it's not okay with you guys, I I won't do it, it's it's just gonna press us real hard on on timing. So do you think that the 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 vote's gonna be six A M. To eight P M. On. Day, the. Eighth. In the town hall?
You know, we can discuss all these changes, I think they're all good. I think they're all an enhancement, I think they have it as Tuesday meetings, Tuesday referendum. We we departed from the Tuesday meeting somewhat just for the need and going to a four day week has had an impact and things. But in this case, in this case, I don't know, Jeff, if you're asking for thoughts, I mean, that's, that's how I.
I mean, I'm fine with that, you ultimately guys set the date. Where, so.
No, the town meeting sets the date and time for the vote. Why, okay, yeah, so, but but we make a strong suggestion.
Yeah.
And and that's when the registrars will be here to accept the vote, so I think that would be a good day to have the voting.
Yeah, if it works, I mean, you have to work better for the staff, obviously, I'm one of those. Well, it it, all you're doing here is pushing.
Everything up one day from the from the board of.
Yeah, all that, all that really happens on our end is you're just. Of changing your, uh, B O S P.
Yes, one day, that way we can, because you have to wait seven days between.
So that that everything falls in after that, so you're kinda out of the.
Yep.
I would recommend, though, that we do move up Jeff to July ninth, which is, which is a Wednesday. Um, to set the middle rate. Because that's also.
The tax collector would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and thanks for this good work, this, I think it's.
Oh, the last thing I had, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing. The letter that you asked me to produce to be included in with the tax bill regarding. Those items that you asked me, we we've been working on it today, we do not have a good draft yet. Carol was supposed to be here seven minutes ago to tell you what she had, uh, so. We we, if if there's a couple of members of your committee who I could communicate with by email to kind of. Porchus into what what we're looking for.
Jeff, I'd only turn to do that, that works. It's cause I have seen.
Okay, I I only, I guess, I mean, as long as it's gonna be a.
It's information.
Whatever the impartial. Impartial. Well, there's that and just, uh, it's just a basic. Yeah, in part respect, I'll need, um, I I'm just picturing a pie graph in my head of.
Yeah, I, so what, what the, what?
But there's.
Segments of the of the, uh. Right.
Yeah.
How it most are impacted by the rebound.
Right, so what we did was we went through the minutes, uh, or the video of the of the last meeting. To try to discern how to craft this document. And I think we're on the repath that to at least build a framework which we can work off of. So I I would suggest that Steph you and 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 one member of the Republican Party and myself get together on that to make sure that. Even though none of us will be happy, that none of us are really mad.
Well, yeah.
Literate.
And I think the, the basic components are is is, you know, the, um, the kind of explaining the rebound.
Right.
You know, and and the takeaways from the rebound.
Yep.
So that's the assessor.
Yep.
And then, you know.
Well, she's the one that's working on on.
Right.
On, hopefully, right now.
Fairly simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's mostly, and then, and then also explaining how people can, uh, compute their their, um. Their savings on the on the vehicle.
I, I.
I mean, Jeff, this is the first time they're gonna see their values.
I know that, but.
You know? Because it's not available.
I I respect what you're saying. I I just, it's it's kinda cop.
Well, I think that's what Pete feels like, their work, I don't know what they're coming up with, but he feels like they're getting minority.
Yeah, that I I I'm starting from complete opaqueness and we're we're working for clarity.
I I I just don't know how you're gonna word that to where the whole time you you said, okay, take a look at your motor vehicle tax.
Right. That's exactly the problem.
And say, oh, look, you you might save something here and then give another ten.
I I don't know how to say that. It doesn't sound good. That's, I'm sorry.
I think.
That's why I've got three people working on it to build a framework and then then we can, once we get it drafted, we'll know which which direction we're going in. And and what we wanna include and what we wanna leave out.
The the fact is, the valuations are all gonna go down, whether someone really saves based on the other factors, whether they net have a net savings. Once their real estate is factored in, that's the if.
Yeah.
Everyone's, everyone's cortex. Is my understanding, I think.
May I make a suggestion?
I think Karen would say that.
You can make a suggestion that you and I work with Bruce to to see if we can craft a letter that's acceptable to.
Sure, if it's okay with him with Jeff, if you would, cause you have, you seem to have kind of a. A vision of what you're thinking doesn't, shouldn't happen.
And seeing as how this is going out with the tax bills, I think we can present this at the.
Have his little July ninth meeting.
Yeah, I know.
I'll I'll do it.
Okay. So if we can have a a fairly solid draft by the July ninth meeting, present.
John Blessington, twenty nine minutes of road. Getting a little, uh, a little confused here over our government, I thought it was town meeting. Or which means that we have referendums which decide issues. And we've had a referendum so far. First one was a massive rejection of the budget, second one was a, um. What less massive rejection of the budget, but it still was rejection. And I feel that the twenty five thousand dollar cut was more or less just a, okay, here's a, here's a token. That will take out the night and vote voted in. I I think that cut is kind of a small one, but let's just remember, I've been told now. By twice by two. Yeah, prominent Democrats in town that once the Board of Finance has made a decision and the Board of Selectment has made a decision, it is our duty to hold. Because they are the bosses and they, and that's not the way it's supposed to work. So, um. I, you can say that, you can tell people how you want them to vote and. I just think you're not cutting it enough to pass the budget on the third. That's all I have to say.
Everybody else in the room, be ready for a note.
Bruce. Bruce Lawler, forty eight River Road, Wellington, Connecticut.
So last week, you people decided to cut twenty five thousand dollars from the Board of Education and that was dead. People voted that they wanted that budget to be turned down, they voted for it, you decide to disrespect the voters. Cut twenty five thousand dollars and vote five of you, okay, to accept that, who is unacceptable to the taxpayers of this town. It was disrespectful of them. I hope that tonight that the Board of Finance decides to vote not to send this budget to the Board of Selectmen. And that goes back to the Board of Finance for further negotiations to trim more money from the, uh, request of the Board of Education, thank you.
I'd like to raise a point of order, well, after these gentlemen speak.
Peter Lutindrich, ninety seven trust. Good evening. I want to share again, same concern I shared after your last meeting, after the results of second referendum. The turnout of our electorate being both referendums was substantial. It's really a false argument. That's being advanced, that this is somehow partisan. The reality is that majority of Wellington voters are unaffiliated. Approximately fifteen hundred of them, by far outnumbering either Democrats or Republicans. The reality is that the vast majority of people in town. Were very concerned about the budget in both referendums, that's why they turned out. That's why it was rejected once. It was very disappointing in your last discussion, following a second referendum to hear that. Somehow there was disinformation or misinformation that caused the voters to not know why they were voting how they were voting. The voters actually tune out all of that noise. They understand when their family budget doesn't work and that's when the town budget doesn't work. And it's just not right. For you to ignore that. And I disagree with the notion that somehow elected representatives are responsible to elements of the budget. Whether that would be the Board of Education, services, Public Works. No, actually, you're accountable to the townspeople. We're the legislative body, we spoke twice and you're choosing to ignore us a second time. I don't understand that. I urge you not to send this to the Board of Selectmen for yet another referendum and yet another referendum defeat. Work together as a board and arrive at some kind of reasonable compromise that respects our voters. Thank you.
Joe, I'm sorry, I'm. Joshua Sabo, eighty four back road. I just came to speak tonight because I'm feeling similarly and very frustrated that after the first two votes that got voted down. To parrot Mr. Blessington throwing a token of twenty five thousand dollars, it's a complete joke. The town budget actually decreased from last year to this year. I would expect that the Board of Education would have the courtesy to do the same. At least do net zero, let's be reasonable here, at least do net zero. And not increase at all from last year to this year, because. There have been comments made that even reducing a couple hundred thousand, which is what that would be to be net zero. Would only equal out to a couple hundred dollars a person in savings in town. A lot of people need those savings, those are actually a big amount of savings, even they're small in dollar amount to a lot of people in this town. I know for myself, I'm just starting out, I've only been out of college two years. And I mean, thinking about buying a home is unattainable for most people in my generation. And I know a lot of other people my age that are way worse than myself, than myself, and a couple hundred dollars extra a year saved would be a big deal. So I'm asking that the Board of Education budget get kicked back, does not put a requirement on that. Deeply consider what the townspeople have told you and do not increase the budget. And definitely don't just decrease it by a little bit, just to basically say that you did without actually making any real decrease. Thank you.
Take a listen, all right? That's. I'm gonna say that. I I I wanna agree with. All of all the speakers. I'd also like to to just kind of point of order, uh, I was a little confused that. We're talking about having a referendum and you guys haven't even approved a budget yet, you haven't accepted the Board of Finance budget. Um, and I understand timeline, I was here at the last meeting, it had to be more early for for obvious reasons, but. You know, we we, you guys seem really urgent to rush this through and I heard that we're just concerned about the cost of postage. We're not concerned about a five hundred thousand dollar increase for the Board of Education or or four and a half percent raises for for the teachers that was given out without any idea if the budget would pass. We don't seem concerned that the referendum has failed twice, that the voters have come out and said, no, we're gonna ignore that. And we're gonna just do this token twenty five thousand. People have asked me online what I consider decent cut to be, I think net zero is reasonable, I'd like to see a negative two point six length town to the school. I think that's fair and reasonable, and that's what the. We've got a fourteen percent plus, how are we rating this town? And it seems like the the motive of, uh, of fixing that is gentrification. Let's jack the taxes, if you can't afford to live here, go someplace else. That seems to be the solution of being sought here, a ten million dollar budget for K through eight that has failing state scores. Not anecdotal, my kids are doing great, actual scores for the kids, I'm sure we have kids that come, I know we have kids that come out of Wellington that do just fine. And go on and be successful. That's that thirty seven percent they're gonna pass in equivalency, that's not the whole picture. It acts not emotions, that's what I'd like you to deal with, we have two votes, one massive defeat of the budget. And the second one was still a defeat, it was still a renunciation and a surprising one, I'm pretty sure for the Board of Education. And they're so sure that you're gonna pass that twenty five thousand, I don't see the Board of Education here tonight, even discuss any problems, it's just like, hey, we have spoken. And I've lived in this town a long time, that's how the Board of Education is always active. They tell people what to do, we're here for their service. The taxpayers are saying to you guys that, hey, you guys are here to serve us, not the other way around, stop increasing our budget. Uh, I'll reserve my time, but I think that's all I was saying. Maybe else, man, before we go to. The deal. That cook?
Thank you, I apologize, I've been having some technical difficulties, so if I repeat anything, um, it's not intentional. First of all, I appreciate what the, um, what Peter and Mitch and, um, the other young man said. I'm concerned about a few things, one is it it a twenty five thousand dollar insult is an insult on a ten million dollar budget. That's not meaningful. The other thing is the timing of everything, so for the last referendum. We found out and we were able to pick up absentee ballots on Thursday for the vote on Tuesday. Because this town office building isn't open on Sunday. Sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and they opened Monday. After my husband was gonna be leaving for a work trip that he could not rearrange. Fortunately, he was able to pick up the absentee ballot on Thursday and vote. But you need to be cognizant, it's summertime, there are people that would love to participate in the process. And the timeframe when I called earlier today and spoke to a very nice gentleman, I believe his name was Ian. Was he's expecting that then, um. By the time it gets to them where they're given the okay to have the ballots published. They're not gonna get stuff until late on the third, the office building is closed on the fourth for Fourth of July, it's closed Saturday, Sunday. And they're saying that the vote is on Wednesday. That does not give people ample time, since nothing is mailed out because it's just the referendum. To participate, you know, somebody's leaving on vacation, they're, by the time they realize that a vote is happening, they're gone. Or they just, I mean, it's to me, it's, there's not, and you have to have at least five or six days where people could come into the town office. And pick up their absentee ballot so that they can participate in the process, and I think that affects everybody, it doesn't matter, um, what's going on. What political party you might be associated or how you feel about the budget. But if people wanna participate, they really do need, um, more than one day or two days that they could come in. So those are my two things, I know this is hard work. And it's, it's disheartening, um, with how much our taxes have gone up. And the quality of service that we're getting necessarily has it. And we also need to be cognizant of of what the community can afford in all aspects of our budgeting. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your hard work.
Hey. Jen and or Mike McCool?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, I'm driving, but I could not not respond, um, there, there are so many things that I would be interested in saying, but. Um, I'll just address a couple of things, our job on, as a member of the Board of Ed, our job is. First and foremost, to support and advocate for the students of Wellington, it's not to make people happy. It's to do the best thing that. It's not to make people happy. It's to do the best thing that we think is in the best interests of our students. So, so we repeatedly, the Board of Ed has returned money to this town. Repeatedly, the Board of Ed has come in with super minimal increases year over year. If one of the people who's standing up and saying the Board of Ed is selfish and only cares about whatever, they should really go back and look at those years that the Board of Ed returned money, that the Board of Ed came in with nominal increases and then come back and have a conversation about it. The, the comments that people are making are so disrespectful. And the second thing that I wanted to bring up is someone mentioned, I, I believe it was Pete Letinicich, that is, this is not a partisan vote. I, I that is laughable, given the fact that the Board of Ed, I mean, the Board of Finance, apologies, has had multiple votes right down the line, three, 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 three. So please tell me that that's not partisan. And I understand that I came into this meeting late, so perhaps there was some announcement that was made. I, I'm having a hard time understanding why the Board of Finance Chair is not chairing the meeting tonight and is sitting in the audience. Thank you.
There anyone else on the line? Who's Paul?
Jim Buehlert?
Yeah, I know.
Jim Buehlert? Got your hand raised?
Changed the line to put up.
Okay. Jim. I'm going to do one thing again. I will be great this time, Peter.
Thank you.
Just want to say, my prior comment to you guys stands. This is the time to stand up and actually speak up back against a lot of the garbage, a lot of the bad speak, a lot of it's just garbage. That's all I can say. So it's, it's in your court, guys. I expect you to step up. I hope you do. Thank you.
Mitch?
On the voting, I completely agree with what Donna was saying. I, I was looking at the same thing today. There's no way for somebody that's not going to be in town for that week to file an absentee ballot. To me, this feels wrong. We talk, everyone talks about disenfranchising voters, that's what we're doing. And again, regardless of party, if I wanted to, and I wasn't going to be here, that'd be upsetting to me. Secondly, I would, I completely agree with what Peter, what, what James said, except I would actually flip that and say, you do, you have the responsibility to listen to the voters and, and, and not all the other stuff. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
If I can direct a question to our first selectman.
Yes.
You know, we frequently ask our lawyer to advise us on things like the vote, yeah, to vote and so forth. Can we use a lawyer for something as important as?
Can you address it to them and I'll answer.
Well, I'm sorry, I just thought that was on top of this. I would write it into the board.
I thought we were finished with the president to speak, but.
All right. Well, it seems like it went into a second round.
Yeah, it does. It does. You're right about that.
I will remove myself in the presence to speak. Thank you.
Go ahead and ask a question.
No, I don't want to burden you.
I just have a point of order about our, okay, I don't understand why the chair of this board said he would not be here. We, we seated an alternate. He came in a little late, sitting in the audience, commenting as, I'm, I don't know if you're commenting as the chair or.
It was commenting as a citizen of the town.
I see. So is that what this is, that you're coming as a citizen? It turns out you, you didn't have to miss the night.
I can have somebody seated in my position and I can comment as a citizen of this town.
I see.
Anybody else? I know that you don't like things, contrary to what you believe.
No, I mean, I don't think you do either.
I have a right as a citizen to speak during present.
Okay, I'm just clarifying what the situation is because it's, it's rather awkward for the board to have their chair.
Undiscussed, yes, okay.
And, and to say, I won't be at the meeting. Will you seat an alternate for me when you're here?
Than the beliefs that you put out regarding the budget, okay? All right, Jeff, I'll take my seat.
Well, I thought, wait, no, I, I, yeah, I don't think you.
I have no idea.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can come in and just
I.
Say I'm a citizen. No, I'm a chair.
Members have come in late before.
Yeah, but this is different. You just said you're here as a citizen.
I spoke as a citizen. Now I'm going to sit down as the chair of the board.
This is crazy.
No more crazier than the first ideas. Now, this is ridiculous. It's a special meeting. First of all, we need to just focus on what's on the agenda. I think that you're. Hey, I really think it's not appropriate if you're not going to be here and then speak as a citizen and then insert yourself as a chair.
I think.
Very clear that you just wanted to have a say. You had your say, but if we seated an alternate, there's we can't just go back and forth like that, what we have before. Yes, we have. We have with you. We have with Melissa. We have had members come in, Christina come in late.
With the seated chair, I would like to address the seated chair, Jeff Pruscher. I move that we do not replace the chair that was seated at the beginning of this meeting with the understanding that the, that the regular chair could not be here to preside. So, second.
Mike McCool has his hand up. He's usually on top of the Roberts.
He does have knowledge of that.
I'll cooperate.
I, I must admit, I'm just coming in late because I had family obligations.
Did you, could you mute him? What, what?
Yes, absolutely. Really? Actually, we listened to people in the room three times. Really? So this is partisan. I'm seeing this.
We are in a, we're in a gray area, but you can have someone, we had this many times before. You have someone that's absent or late. If they are late, once they come into the meeting, the alternate is no longer seated. But they also participate as a member of the public.
And when I asked for the point of order and asked to clarify, I was told, I'm here as a citizen, not as a chair. So I don't know how you guys want it, all the ways you want it, when you want it, but that does, that seems to be a clash of reasons and rationale.
Chairman, I'm trying to make a point of order myself.
Saying, we listened to everyone else multiple times. Sorry, Mike.
You stated the present to speak was over. No, she said she thought. I, I, I didn't move on. Nobody has moved on. We're still technically in the present to speak. You had your say and then you stood up and tried to take over the meeting and we're questioning you at this point.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Just a point of order, without weighing into what I just am coming into here, I think there's a lot of problems with this. And it wouldn't surprise me if this turned into a mess after this meeting because I believe once the member arrives in the, at the meeting where they had an alternate seated for them, they automatically take over the spot. I believe we clarified this a while back on another committee. So technically, as soon as Chairman Lawler was in the room, he probably should have taken the seat. This, this looks like a mess to me.
But he refused. So what do we do at that point?
Then he's created a seventh member of the committee. You have, you all of a sudden have a seven member Board of Finance. Just like the problem we talked about before, if the alternates are influencing decision-making too much, they're creating a seventh or eighth member. I don't know the answer to what's happening right now. I'm just saying this is messy and the shenanigans could get us in trouble.
Christina? Can you weigh in on this since you have vast experience running meetings and presiding over the town?
Mitch? So it's normal procedure, parliamentary procedure for chair to be able to step away as chair, speak as a citizen and step back in as a chair. He's allowed to speak as a citizen. He's going to announce that he's speaking as a citizen, not as a chair. You guys sitting at that table follow different rules than we do out here in the audience, which is why that's allowed by parliamentary rules. So I don't think we create a situation. Also, point of order, when I speak, when I'm done, I'm going to, Ms. Summers. When I'm done speaking, I said I reserve my time. I'm not, I'm not using more time than I'm allowed to. Also, it's interesting to me that you didn't complain the instant the first person spoke second. You, you complained second person that spoke second was major, who disagrees with you. So you seemed okay when somebody that agrees with you spoke twice. But then you objected when I did. That's the end. Of the chairman thing, I believe that's.
Do we have anybody else for present to speak? So just.
John, if I can make a suggestion, you voted to see an alternate in the place of the of the chairman, which means now you have an extra person on the committee.
We never.
What?
We never unseat.
Going to say, okay.
I'm just saying, we, we guess it's just we never do that, so.
So is she seated now?
No, is he back? It would be less messy if you just, you know.
Okay. Okay, never mind.
In my mind, that's how that works.
That's, but Jeff, you're.
We never had, we never made a motion to unseat an alternate.
We've never had a situation where, where a chair came in, acted as a citizen and said, when, when a point of order was raised, that they were here as a citizen and then changed their mind to come up and take the gavel. We have never had that situation. It's very different from someone coming in late and asking for, you know, I mean, having to seat an alternate for that interim period of time. And when they come in, we receive, we receive them. This is very different from that. This is a choreography, so.
We can vote on it. Is there any motion?
I think you had a motion of law, right?
Basically, the, make a motion to unseat Melissa Miller for being first Lawler. Didn't.
I did make the motion that we that we leave the interim chair in place and.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion. Oh, and also, isn't the chair the one who asked for that? Just so presiding. That's what we're deciding here. You're not presiding over this vote.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'm just saying. Is anyone else an alternate stay here?
Nobody. I wish I was.
I saw you briefly.
Can you just restate that?
I move, I move that the interim chair stay in the position of chair and the, the alternate stay seated for the chair who said he would be absent tonight and instead appeared as a citizen only.
Second. That kind of money is like, maybe not.
I don't know if they knew this, so I don't know how.
So that means you're not seated at all.
I don't think it was, I mean, all this, all this discussion happened beforehand.
Well, no, he's still a member. I just run, I'm just going to run the meeting. I do that too.
You can't tell someone board seven.
No, no, I don't think he's not.
But I wouldn't be voting anymore.
She's not voting.
See, that makes a big difference, doesn't it?
Well. Well.
I don't know. I feel like, I feel like something's very wrong with the way this is unfolded.
If, if I could, if I could just say something as an executive. Sure. There's been a motion. Yeah. There's been a second. You've now had some discussion. Is there any further discussion? And if there isn't, you should hold a vote and see whether the motion passes or not. With Melissa still voting, because that's where we're at, okay? Melissa voting, Bruce is not, not seated yet because of the motion that Stephanie made. So. You're right. So, okay, all those in favor of leaving you as the chair? Yes, Stephanie.
Opens in favor?
Signify by saying aye.
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 No votes. Okay. Yeah. No preference. No old business, new business. Vote to recommend the VOS Polytown meeting for the purpose of a third budget referendum for the K through eight, pre-K through eight education.
But since it's a point of order, I would suggest that seeing as how that last passed, Bruce is not a seated member of the board today, whether he should be stood in the way of.
Oh, he is. That was part of the motion. No, 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 no.
Stayed chair, stays seated.
She stays seated, her.
So Bruce is basically an alternate like I am, non-voting.
Okay, there you go.
I move to recommend the Board of Selectmen Polytown meeting for the purpose of a third budget referendum for the pre-K through eight education budget in the amount of ten million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I want my paperwork. We say the.
Ten million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
All right, thank you. I give the last on the meeting. Okay, so discussion. Heard from a lot of people in the audience, we've heard from people throughout this whole process. No one's mad. But no budget ever satisfies everyone. I, I don't know where we're going to come to now today. What, I, I don't know what us going through the process again. What we did last week. What different success we've come to. Yeah, we, different. Ballot. That'll be three noes and three yeses again and again, like the other week. But maybe get another ten grand out, which won't really affect much of anything. Two hundred grand. Voters turn it down again, we can have those discussions.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I think the bigger story here is not, not the the twenty-five thousand dollars that was cut is the change in revenues, and that is changing what the mill rate is by over a percentage. That's, that's huge. That's a big deal. That, and that, I think gets us to where where it was stated we were trying to get to. So I'm not sure why there, there's still a lot of discussion about that.
I, I agree with that for a couple of reasons. Well, from multiple reasons. First of all, it's not just a twenty-five thousand cut overall. The schools have cut more than two hundred thousand. And with that twenty-five thousand figured in, and they also, the, the school reserve in the CIP plan was cut two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you could say the, the schools have stood to lose four hundred and thirty-two thousand, just by what I've scratched out. There's things I'm sure I'm not remembering. So I think that's a pretty, a pretty heavy knock. But the results of what's happened here is, to me, the takeaways from Donna's numbers are that the, the, the. The, um, the, the, uh. Overall, in taxes to be raised, which is the overall impact, counting the revenue offset. Has gone from three point five percent overall to two point four percent. That, that's the number that Christine is referring to. That's huge. The expenses have gone from one point six percent to one point four percent. Uh, from all three budgets. So that is. Uh, those, those numbers are significant and the, um. Especially the, the taxation to be raised for a two point four percent. I believe when we were at the table, when we were closing the budget for the first time, uh. Walter's number that he put out there that he wanted to get to is two point nine. Um, so we'll half a percentage point below, I mean, half a point below that. So, um, I feel like that's, that's, that relates to, I mean, that reveals. A lot of cutting of the budgets. All the budgets have been hit in different ways. Um. This is, I, you know, I, I, I very much understand the rebound, um. The rebound impact and the overlay of the rebound, which is, makes this budget year extremely complicated. And, and I understand the in- interest in getting the budgets down to, you know, zero percent. From that one point four, um, as, as some kind of. I don't know, bellwether or, or goal that's, that's being, uh, that's being held by some, uh, some in town. But I think that it's unreasonable in these times when we know what's happening with utilities. We know what's happening with. I mean, it's, it doesn't in any way reflect what the federal picture is. That you, that we take budgets in a small town that are already pretty tight. And take them down to zero to, to, to just make the statement because, uh, you know, otherwise, I'm. The numbers are pretty, the numbers are largely different, very different from the second referendum. So I feel like that's worth sending it back out because if you're taking your overall taxation to be raised. Down from three point five to two point four, and yes, a lot of that is the revenue picture. But, but let's talk about revenue. A big hunk of the revenue, the offset is education cost sharing. So again, that's education money. Um, and that, so. I, we're having a discussion, we're in a discussion on a motion on the table, I mean. Is that a point of order? Point of order. I, I do not appreciate being attacked by, uh, the multiple people in the room, including at this table.
I didn't.
I'm not talking to you, Jeff. I'm not talking to you, and I don't appreciate. Being interrupted.
We're gonna continue to progress in years to come unless we get more revenue in town. That's gonna probably be more development. I think we need to start advocating. You know, overall for that, or we're gonna have some major issues here. We want the nice things, gotta be able to pay for it. This is, this, this shit show that we got through here in the last, that few months, it's, uh, it, it shows you how people are feeling.
Donna, is the, the overall increase in the education budget in the K three eight? Is it more like two hundred and forty-five thousand?
Yes.
But, yeah, so I was even understating it, a little over two hundred. Plus the two twenty-five, um, from the school reserve, so. To say that this is an insulting decrease. I do not get that. I mean, obviously, that's not connecting the dots from this whole budget season. Which has been long and complicated, and I realize everybody has not seen every chapter.
And whether anybody agrees or disagrees, people are speaking out for what they feel is gonna affect them most. And I don't think we should be, you know, attacking anybody for anybody's opinion, whether you agree with them or not. It doesn't make our jobs any easier. And no one should feel like they're being attacked, but I mean, I understand that sitting on this board, you know. We have to kind of make final decisions, and we talk to the people in town, you know, but discredit. You know, and I'm not gonna, you know, call out names, but discredit anybody that agrees or disagrees. I don't think that's fair to anybody. I just think that that's wrong, and we have to stop attacking each other. And say, hey, we all have to get together as a community. And stop just being nasty to each other. I mean, we all have problems. Some people are not gonna be able to afford their taxes when they go up. And there might be somebody that might end up losing their house in a tax sale because they can't afford to pay for their extra taxes. Maybe somebody can. I don't know, but to discredit somebody, to tell them that because they voted no. I just don't think that that's right, and I'm right there. We definitely need to work together. People need to start talking about how to get smaller businesses here in town. In order to offset some of this issue. I mean, I had to cut my budget, and I'm probably gonna have to cut it again because I have to come up with that extra money. So I'm not gonna discredit anybody, whether you have money or you don't have money. But, you know, I mean, we've all worked really hard to get here, so to say. You know, I agree with twenty-five thousand or don't agree. That's not for me to say, but to, to tell somebody out in the audience that they don't have a right to feel that, represent themselves and how they talk. I just think that we are in a rock and a hard place and, you know, I wasn't here or listened to the meeting last week. I was online, and then I got cut short at the very end. Um, I was in an area where I didn't.
Who is saying, excuse me, but who is saying someone in the audience doesn't have the right to talk?
I'm just saying, the way. I mean, you said that you felt like you were being attacked.
I was.
And I don't, I don't know that you were or weren't. I mean, I try to stay out of people's political nonsense.
You didn't hear what Bruce said to me?
I, I, I'm trying to stay out of the political nonsense. I don't think either of you should talk to each other like that. I don't, I don't.
I didn't talk to him that way.
I don't think anybody should talk that way because we should be professionals sitting up here. You know, we're supposed to be representing people in the town. You may have people that you're talking to, Bruce may have people he's talking to. Everybody has the right to feel differently. That's, that's all I'm saying, and it's hard. It's hard enough to sit on this board. But then, when I have to actually listen to people being nasty to each other, no wonder why the rest of the citizens in this town. Don't like us and think that we're not doing a good job, and. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of bad. It's just a bad look, and honestly, I'm not gonna say anymore about it. Um, I mean, I just, I think that you guys voted on this last week. I think we have to present it the way it is and let the townspeople make a choice. Honestly, I, I don't know what else to say.
Okay. Christina, you got anything else wanna say?
I don't have anything to add.
Please, you wanna do a roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Ms. Prusa.
Aye.
You'll see the, the flow of.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Prusso.
Yes.
Ms. Summers, yes.
Hey, it is. Yes, sir. The question on the question. Would you like the question, the too high, too low added to our friend of the life? You, you kind of alluded to that earlier, um. If you want, if I heard correctly, it was, it got a little, might be. Yes, yes, no, no question.
Yeah, whether you can say, if you voted yes, was it too high or too low? That's where the money part comes in, as it don't have a, cause you can't, don't have a legal opinion on that. It, if you look at it, look at a graph, the, the people who vote, you know, yes. They, they found that number to be acceptable. Whether they thought it was too high or too low, it was still acceptable. It's the people that voted no that found the number unacceptable, whether they found it unacceptable too high or unacceptable too low. That's, that's the outside that narrow spectrum of, well, not necessarily narrow spectrum. Of people who found it acceptable. All right, so that, the, the no question, yes, the, if you voted no question. Makes far more sense to me than the, if you voted yes question. The legality of the vote, yes, if you voted yes question is still in, in, in. You know, limbo. If you want the vote no question, then is it too high, too low? That's all I need to know is whether you would like it added to the ballot or not.
But that one question, it was, it's one question, two answers, so it says, if you voted no.
Yeah.
Was it because A, too high, B, too low? That's all, it's, it's a one question. And so you, you, you as a board have to, to, to tell me whether you want that added to the ballot or not.
Why couldn't the question be regardless of how you voted, was it too high or too low?
I, I suppose it could be. Well, how do you word so, um. I just see worded out. But you need.
All I know is that writing it, writing it the, if you voted no, I know that, I know absolutely that, that's.
If it is legal.
Yeah.
Then.
I will try to. I would have to find out within twenty-four hours, and I'm not trying to do that, because. Tomorrow morning, we're filing our agenda and then having our meeting twenty-four hours after that, the, the moving calendar, so that. We can try to get an August first mailing on this. Uh, so I, yeah, an August first mailing on the, so we can get receipts in by August thirty. About when our reserves start getting a little thin.
Hope like to see my people paid.
Nice.
So I, I know the last time around, it just seemed like it didn't, you couldn't agree that it was all encompassing enough.
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe that the vote last time was zero to eight against. But I'm offering it because. I'm a nice guy.
I, I, what is everybody? You, you probably need a motion. It's a special meeting. It, it, it's, it's part of the call.
I'm just asking, I don't.
Yeah, no, no, I, 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 under the, let me see this, because if you read the whole. They, just the, the agenda. To recommend the call of the purpose of. The, the, yeah, all right, it's not, it's. It's, it's part of the budget collection, but I, I, I see where, if you feel that it's, it's out of that bounds and. I would say just, seeing as how there's no, uh, motion yet, just keep moving. There we go, I think, I don't, I mean. Any other discussion?
No.
So back to the calendar, this is a special meeting, but this does go on. You're gonna change your Board of Selectment.
We're changing the Board of Selectment meeting from the, um.
Twenty-six to the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-six to the twenty-fifth. And then that gives us the, the town meeting going from July second to July first. Which allows us to go July eighth on the referendum. So the special meeting should be, your, your next meeting, special meeting should be on the ninth.
Yeah.
So as far as acting on it, um. The vice calendar, in my mind, it all starts with that, and then.
Yes.
So we, I, we don't have to really do it. We're not gonna adopt this. Or.
Is it on your.
Gonna go from you.
This, yeah.
Go from that meeting forward.
Yep.
And that gets us back on Tuesdays, which is, is when people are, are used to voting. Everybody good?
Can we have a consensus that we're, uh, in agreement with the suggestions that have been made?
I thought we just did that, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I know if you ask for consensus or not.
I, I said it, everybody good?
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
It's okay. Everybody good, everybody?
Yeah, we're good.
We're all good.
Our correspondent is present to speak. This will be good. Mike McCoe.
Good evening again, um.
Hi.
My head is, uh, my head's spinning a little bit with what went on tonight, trying to understand it. I tried to do some. Robert's Rules research. In the meantime, there wasn't enough time. Um, I. First of all, I wanna say I very much understand and respect not only Mr. Lawler, but anyone else on the board's desire to not give up. Their right to free speech. I truly respect that. And it is a challenge. We've seen it before. I've been in that position myself. As a selectman and as a chair of your board. The. Balance that I felt when I was in that role was that when I volunteered to put my name on a ballot or be appointed to that role. I took on more than just my own personal right to free speech. I didn't give it up. And no one should, but I also understood that I had to balance that with a commitment to try to make good decisions for the townspeople. And that's something greater than me. And when I took on the position of being chair. Of the Board of Finance, I knew I took on even more balancing act. Because I had to do what was right for the townspeople. Under the guise of trying to manage the items that the chair is in charge of, which is only a few things, like setting the agenda. And trying to facilitate the meeting. And that's the challenge of being in a leadership position. I understand that people are struggling tonight with wanting to have their free speech. But I didn't see a lot in the vein of leadership with, and I came in late to the meeting, but I think I figured out what was going on. It was messy. I think there's gonna be an argument that there were seven members. And even the vote to. Have Jeff stay. And keep Melissa seated, I think is probably gonna, if we, if people challenge it, will be found to be defective. Because I believe Robert's Rules is clear, when a member returns. They are automatically seated and you don't have the choice to keep the alternate seated, but I could be wrong on that. Um, the beginning of the motion of asking Jeff to stay as the chair, I think is perfectly legitimate. Anyway. I don't think this was a good look tonight. I don't think we saw leadership in action, and. To use not a very cool sounding term, I'm a little bummed out about it. I'm disappointed. There's gotta be a better way of doing business. Thank you.
Donna Cook.
So after I thought I clearly articulated the need for some more time between. When you declare a time, day to vote, and when the people actually can get an absentee ballot. You did the same thing. So the ballots won't be ready till the third. July fourth is a holiday. You've got Saturday, Sunday, and the vote's gonna be Tuesday, which means if somebody wants to vote. And they are gone for the holiday weekend, they can't get in by Thursday. And it was iffy when I talked to Evan or Ivan, whatever that nice gentleman's name is. That they could even be ready for the third. You're having a vote on the eighth. I, I don't understand why you're making it hard for people to participate. Thank you.
Anybody else online? No, anybody else in the room? Sorry, yeah, okay. James Marshall, if you're, uh, I gotta go back and just sort of act my initial. Sorry, this meeting that the politicking is, is serving, you know, like, um, nobody at all, and, um. It's a shame, this was really a mess, guys, it's embarrassing, um, and. it's a shame. This was really a mess, guys. It was embarrassing. Um, and we, it shouldn't be like this. It's serving nobody. You gotta move past this. You gotta stand up and do what's right. And you just gotta do better. Um, thank you.
Yes. Major, it's very good. Um, it's like there's only one right and one wrong. It's black and white, I guess, and, uh, if you don't agree with and the one opinion, you're all wrong. Um, I'm just fine with the way the board voted tonight. We're ready to send it in a tie. I agree with Donna. I think the the election should also be giving time for absentee balance should also be addressed. Um, and I would like to ask a kind of pour order question. If you guys, if I'm in the middle tonight, uh, because the whole seating, not seating, alternate, not alternate thing, does that invalidate this meeting? End of vote.
Yes, we can find you. The one ten to ninety-seven cross road. I am also disappointed by the board's unwillingness to work tonight for some kind of compromise that could lead to voters. That's unfortunate. But I'm even more disturbed by the failure of the board to even recognize its basic responsibility. As a town, we don't vote on mill rate. We don't vote on revenue. Fortunately for us, our founders set up a system where we vote on spending increase. That's what the referendum is about. It doesn't matter how much revenue we have. We vote on how much the budget is going on. And townspeople understand this because budgets and spending increases increases compound from year to year, and the voters know this, whereas revenue, as we found out this year, can actually go down. So at least it would have been helpful if we would have clarified what we're voting on. But you didn't do that either. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just question, if you're gonna look into that, how will we find out about the results?
I mean. If there's a formal complaint that it goes through, uh, boy of work, they'll let us know in three to five months on the. I I wish I had a better answer for you. I I really don't.
It doesn't help any.
No, not not that's.
Not sure that's freedom of that, um, information.
Yeah, they have. I mean, they've they've gone to, I mean, every every other thing that has to do with meetings and how meetings are run has gone to freedom of information.
Yeah.
Even stuff that I I had nothing to do with freedom of information has gone to freedom of information. That's why I I I think that it's probably them that it goes to.
It would be.
There you go. I agree with John Blessington. Oh, God, if the world's coming to an end.
Okay, moving on. Good luck there.
Things to be shown.
I I, it's like summer. I'd like to say that I'm glad that Ralph was out of the hospital.
I actually, I would like to say that, um, I can't keep Ralph tools in your, uh, box. He had a reason about I don't know how he he wants us to discuss that. He was in the hospital for a few days from Thursday to yesterday.
Right, just in time for the heat wave.
But, uh, he's still kind of, I talked to him today. Sounds good for all the things he's got. So keep in with your thoughts and that, if anything else. If the ten motion to adjourn, so move.
I'll second.
Although. Get all those in favor. Aye, aye.